So we will discuss, and I did have one gentleman asked to speak on behalf of multiples. And beyond that, it will be a very controlled discussion. But we are here tonight to gather the facts. And I think that about what this meeting and what these codes all entail. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Shields to get us started tonight.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to open up with just a bit of background information and some history here. The agenda for this work session and the updates recommended in the building codes. Our purpose is to provide the governing body complete and accurate information so that the most informed decision can be made when that point has reached the way you're trying to process. The recommendations include adopting the 2015 I codes, which would be an update as the city now follows the 2009 code. Also included are updates and revisions to existing ordinances relating to chapter eight and chapter sixteen of the city's municipal code. The work session agenda packet included a list of bullet points with subject matter on this topic, copies of a municipal code section from our Kansas City in Winfield, and an overview from building official Richard Jack, copies of emails and letters received from citizens on this topic. Also a packet of information with the revision of the governing body a number of weeks ago. The packet was titled "Proposed Changes to the 2009 Building Code." We certainly hope that you've received a review of all information provided in preparation for this work session. The proposed changes to the 2009 building codes is the same pack of information provided by the Combined Trades Board. The Combined Trades Board has recommended adoption of the proposed changes as presented. Work on the update to the 2015 I codes is a joint effort of the Combined Trades Boards from the cities of our Kansas City, Winfield, and Winfield. Joining me were elder members of different trades for each board. The board members had the final decision of what was included. The updates and revisions to ordinances relating to chapter eight and chapter sixteen of our municipal code are proposed after a review by building official Richard Jack. A number of the changes relate to changing the name of the department in references to a city engineer. As the city no longer has an engineer on staff, references to the city engineer are proposed with the update to building officials. The name of the department is proposed to be building zoning and code compliance. Other updates or revisions proposed will be covered in later discussions. Clearly, there are some things being proposed that has created controversy among members of the public. We do believe there is some misunderstanding in several instances of what is being considered by some to be changes. There appears to be the incorrect belief among some that there is work that can be done correct currently that does not require a contractor's license, when in reality it does. There are also comments we have heard of types of work that some believe they will no longer be able to do. In some instances, that is incorrect. I reached out to the South Central Kansas Landlords Association on a letter dated January thirteenth, twenty seventeen. I asked the association to provide a list of examples of work that was in question. I indicated we would review and confirm if a permit would be required under the new proposed code wording with our intent being to ensure everyone involved has the same correct understanding of the work for resolving the issues. At this point in time, I have not received any lists. With the recommendation of the Combined Trades Board to adopt the proposed updates as presented, that is what will be brought to the governing body in a regular meeting. At that point, the governing body could choose to adopt as recommended, or could direct if the matter be returned to the Combined Trades Board for further review and consideration, or the governing body could adopt what you as a body decide upon. That is some of the background of the issue, some of the topics. With that provided, I'll turn it over to Director Jones for some additional information.
After reorganizing the engineering and building department into Public Works in December two thousand and sixteen, I attended the next two Combined Trades Board meetings to become familiar with proposed I codes and local amendments. It became very evident that there was concerns about the proposed language referencing ownership and how it would be defined, and more specifically, what work would be allowed by different types of ownership. My understanding of the proposed language and the work that an owner of rental property would be able to do is consistent with the interpretation and practices when I worked in the department between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and eight. That is, that most non-structural work commonly done by a building contractor would be allowed to be done by the owner regardless if the work required a permit or not. Nearly all work falling under the traits of plumbing, electrical, and mechanical if the permit is required would require a licensed contractor. To answer some of the questions I've personally received the last few weeks, the following work does not require a permit and should be done by the owner of any property, residential property. Replacing a school or sink, replacing a light switch, replacing an electrical outlet providing that the outlet matches the wiring system, replacing a door, replacing a window if the opening's not made larger, or a window in a sleeping room is not made smaller. Cabinetry, painting, trim work, and floor coverings. There's a long list of maintenance and repairs that can be done without permits. There are also several things that require a permit that the owner is still able to do, including fences, roofing done by the owner, siding, framing, insulation, sheet rock. After staff review, all permits from two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and sixteen, along with a hundred and eighty-plus randomly selected that are most backed to nineteen ninety-nine, this appears to be consistent with the way it has been done for nearly twenty years. It's not the intent of the Combined Trades Board, staff, or anyone else within this organization to tie the hands of property owners so that they've invested a significant amount of money into the homes in our community. We simply wish to clarify the wording amongst several codes to ensure consistency and understanding. I personally believe it would be a great benefit to have more information like that referenced by City Manager Shields from the owners themselves so we can discuss and address specific issues. So at this time, we'll allow building official Richard Jack to give a presentation of the two thousand and fifteen I codes and the local amendments of work.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, currently we're on the two thousand and nine I codes, the International Building Code, Residential Code, Plumbing Code, and Mechanical Code, and the International Property Maintenance Code. Currently, we've already adopted the two thousand and fourteen National Electric Code, the NEC, and it is in place. What I'm proposing is that we update from the two thousand and nine to the two thousand and fifteen I codes. Again, building, residential, also the international existing building code, which allows flexibility in commercial buildings that are existing and a hundred years old to be able to rehab them in the way that they don't have to necessarily meet the current two thousand and nine or two thousand and fifteen codes. And that we adopt the residential deck guide that was put together. I actually put that, this publication together, and have been endorsed by the cities of our city and Winfield and the Combined Trades Board as such. Also, to adopt the basement standards of the city of Wichita, which simply put, there's, it's a way for myself to be able to explain easier to people what needs to be done for a footing on the type of structure that they're putting up. Also to amend the ordinances per such, as Mr. Shields had said, the creation of a building department, building zoning and code compliance, since we no longer have a city engineer. To update some of the wording in the ordinances, to clarify some, to correct some spelling and some grammatical errors. Other than that, if you would like to start with the IVC, we can, or we can start wherever you would like.
All right. Anyone have any questions or suggestions of where you'd like to start?
I've got a question.
Sure, Mr. Valentine.
Yes, sir.
When you checked with our city in Winfield, I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be a hells advocate, don't get me wrong, though. What, did you find out what percentage of their housing in Winfield and Ark City, what percentage of the housing was rental? And either of those cities compared to what is rental in Wellington?
I do not know the answer to that. It was not brought up in these meetings.
So we don't really know significantly how many people actually rent. What I'm getting at is, the population difference between those two cities in Wellington and the income difference between those two in Ark City. Can you hear me out here? What I think is, we're going to impact a lot of people here with some decisions. And maybe there needs to go a little more clarification on that at some point before any decision is made.
I can probably find that out, and I'll be on it first thing Thursday morning. And I will contact the building officials of Winfield and Ark City and ask them if they can get that information for me.
Could you find out what kind of impact, though, it's been percentage-wise on their communities, is what I'm saying? Because you've got landlord, property owners here, and then you've got people that rent, you know, from them.
Mr. Valentine, a couple of things if I may. Number one, in answer to your question, I mean, for the city of Wellington, the last census, which obviously is twenty ten, that's the last official census, the owner occupied housing units was sixty-five point three percent of the housing units in the city. Richer occupied housing units was thirty-four point seven percent of that total. And also, just a reminder, the Ark City and Winfield has had one of the most controversial issues that seem to be the topic here already in place regarding the owner occupant and homeowner. They have already had that in place for a number of years.
All I'm doing is answering some questions.
And I will get that information for the council.
And I do appreciate you having Mr. Shields.
Good question, Mr. Valentine. My question, just for clarification and so that everyone else can understand, why is it that we do this with Winfield and Ark City? Is that just an agreement that we've had or a longstanding? What is the idea behind this joint effort?
The reasoning behind it was, they were in the process of updating to the two thousand and fourteen NEC, because they're right now in the two thousand and eight. Myself and Rod Haney, who's the building official in Winfield, and Richard Brown, who's the building official in Ark City, got together, we sat down, we were talking about doing classes last year for continuing education. And as we got to talking, I had suggested that I always thought about trying to update the codes for the city, because we were on the two thousand and nine, it was now two thousand and fifteen, so that was on the second code cycle. Atypical, most municipalities will go on a two-year cycle, not an every-year cycle, because it's simply not feasible to do every three years. Every six years is atypical. Some municipalities are still back on the ninety-seven UBC, which is a good book, it's just happens to be twenty years old at this time. So those municipalities now have ordinances that are two hundred pages long because they have to be changed. So when I suggested that, Rod said, well, that's a great idea, because we're also on that. Richard Brown said, it's a wonderful idea, let's put a group together. And me, so I personally have over a hundred hours invested, at very low cost to the city, because I was not charging them for my time to do this. Two nights a week for almost six months.
So it's customary for communities like ours to...
It's not uncommon. The city of Wichita, the largest municipality in our general area, atypical, Andover, Augusta, Derby, Hayesville...
Goddard.
Goddard will follow suit to them, because those tradespeople, those contractors, will work in those communities. So they don't go from one community to the next and say, oh, we have to do this over here, I forgot we're in Goddard today. So when we discussed it, the three of us building officials discussed it, we said if we got together, created, all on the two thousand and fifteen, had the trades board go over the trades requirements, that way if a mechanical contractor from Wellington went to Ark City, they would know this is what's required. This is the amendment that's in place if they have to do a non-metallic plug. They know they have to do it here, they have to do it in Winfield, and they have to do it in Ark City. Not, well, we can do this here, but we have to do this here, and we can do this over here. And the three of us thought that would be an excellent idea, because we do very often have interchangeable tradespeople working in our communities.
Okay. That's a great explanation. Yes, Mr. Hatter?
I got two questions. I'll ask them both if you can answer them. Who directed you to start this process? And then, in addition to that, at what point in the process was legal counsel involved with what will eventually become laws with the wording in that?
Nobody directed me. I felt it typically, from my experience, a six-year cycle was the time to update codes. And this book, all the information that you have that was sent to you, was given to the legal counsel at the time, about a month before you had it. He got back with me, made a few changes, I made those changes, and that's the copy that you have now.
And is that the copy that was voted on by the trade board?
Yes, that is the copy that was voted on by the trade board.
So the previous legal counsel that we had is the one that reviewed this?
Yes, that reviewed this. Made changes, I made the changes in the book, and then that's the copy that you have and that the Combined Trades Board had.
Have Winfield and Ark City passed these updates?
Ark City has passed the updates, they are in place. Excuse me, the city of Winfield has gone through management change, and Rod Haney felt it was more appropriate to wait till that was in place. Their legal counsel does have it, and as soon as, next week, he's going to present it to their city council.
Yes, Mr. Valentine.
This legal work was done by mine, I saw. Have you had a chance to look at it, Sean?
Yes.
You see anything wrong?
I just went through the, I was more concerned, obviously, with the enforcement side of it, notices and things like that. I did talk to Ark City when they adopted it, the city attorney there made some language in the adopting ordinance to address the differences between Kansas law on notice requirements, which is what's in the code. That's how Ark City addressed those notice questions. They're not big differences. For example, it's mail versus registered mail, things like that. So I've looked at it, those changes weren't made in what's here. Ark City handled it through the adopting ordinance. And I think that probably...
All right, does anybody else have any other questions or staff, or anyone else who's not have problems or anything here? Well, Mr. Rulane, who asked if he could speak on behalf, so, Mr. Rulane, if you'd like to be, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you. Dear Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and most importantly, all of you here. Number one, thanks for letting me speak now, thanks for letting me speak first, and I think that as I go along, you'll agree that this is the best way for you to conduct a workshop, not by standing in the crowd.
And Mr. Rulane, if I could remind you, we're a small town, so we've got to know where you're from and who you are and all that good stuff, so...
Okay. My name is Jim Rulane, R-U-A-N-E, N is Nancy, E is Edward. I work at Woodstock, and I have a lot of experience in these things. Helped rewrite the Woodstock code, building and zoning, and this is kind of my thing.
Have you been hired by someone to be here tonight?
Yes. I represent the South Central Kansas Landlords Association. And for the efficiency tonight, I speak for all seventy-seven landlord, owner, members of that group. I believe that this group, these people, are your most knowledgeable constituents on how to successfully manage rental units and apartment complexes. You already know that their answer is no, they don't want the changes, they want to continue to be able to function as they have and work on their own properties. So I'm not going to belay with that. The extent they've expressed their opposition, and the, it really boils down to, is they feel they're being deprived of the same right to build sweat equity in the property that they own, that, and owner occupant for it. But I think that you can rely upon this group of landlords to be your experts in your questions on what are the impact of these changes on the landlords themselves. Moving on, I also speak on behalf of at least two hundred and ninety-five parcels. I don't know how many of them are multifamily or not, I just don't have that great hand. And for the improvements on them. But what I want to emphasize there is, two hundred and ninety-five parcels, if you are affecting the profitability by having higher costs, lower profits, that would ultimately bring about a negative impact to the tax basis in that world. And you've heard much said about the light and how everything will be condemned, I'm not going to condemn that. Derivatively, not directly, I speak for their eight hundred and twenty-five tenants, who are all good citizens of Wellington. Now, the impact of these changes would either most certainly or most likely be that their rents would have to go up as the landlord's costs increased. And what I think will be really difficult to figure out is that the amount of security deposits that are required are also going to have to be more. And the issue of security deposits is really important to the working poor, and especially the people that are living here in the community up in Wachah or wherever for their jobs. It would seem, from just talking it around, that a lot of these tenants don't have jobs here in Wellington, but love the schools, love the community, and want to stay here if they can afford to. So my hope is that if I'm speaking for nine hundred people, and I'm really short, that'll make best use of your time. So you can actually really workshop this through your discussions, and then, if and when, it should come back on to the city council agenda. Then maybe we can go into some of these other things, but I really just kind of want to set that stage. One of our great concerns, the way this has been set up, is that up to now, the only public comment that was requested by Wellington was the Combined Trades Boards of Ark City, Winfield, and Wellington. Now, the Wellington group, which I believe is one of the relevant, seven, two in favor of the change. There were, at some point in the process, two landlords added to that group, obviously the two major votes. The group of seven, who were tradesmen, labor member unions of their peer, and they could hardly vote against or support against it. You know, the ye votes from the tradesmen representing their peers, you know, they would pretty much have to take the position that landlords shouldn't be able to make these repairs because of the safety and health concerns and other reasons. But these people that being the tradesmen were kind of backed into a position where they would either have to publicly say that anybody without their credentials and training could do a perfectly fine, good, safe job, or we are the only ones that can and should do this. So my point there is that while you have received input from three trades groups, the outcome of that process should be no surprise to anybody. Especially since these tradesmen were answerable to their peers. It would have made it very hard for them to do anything than just say absolutely not should anyone be doing this work other than a skilled member such as us. Now, Mr. Jack mentioned the importance of uniformity between the three cities, and I find that argument to have no water at all. These contractors are professionals, it is their job to know the code in whatever city in which they're functioning. And if it should happen to be that here in Wellington, things are different than they are in our city in Winfield, then part of what these tradespeople get paid for is knowing what code is in the city in which they're operating. And I don't believe that it is the city's responsibility to make these conforming changes just for the convenience of the tradesmen. The questions that we hope will be answered by tonight is, what is the urgency, or what is the perceived liability that motivates this quick action? I will supply to the city manager, I don't have enough for everybody, but in a recent survey that was done by sixty-one cities in Kansas, it would appear that only the larger metropolitan areas, with Topeka being the smallest of those, have in fact moved up to the two thousand and sixteen code. And that some of the cities of smaller sizes go back to two thousand and six or two thousand and eight. It's not required, it is, if it is perceived as a risk, it's a risk which a good many other cities know, other than Shawnee County, Overland Park, Lenetta, and places like that. And, you know, there was one mention by Mr. Jack that it was his idea, he created it on his own, on his own time, on his own dime, and that he did have Mike Brown, the old city attorney, look at it and make changes. Now, what that leaves out is, did the old city attorney have any support for this idea? Did he recommend it? How did he feel about it? I know as a lawyer, somebody hands you a document and says, please review this and make changes, and that's what I'm going to do. But if they don't ask me whether I'm in favor of it or not, I'm not going to say. So I don't think it's fair to assume that the former city attorney was behind this. And by this, I mean support of this. Other question is whether there's any empirical, and that means local practical experience you know about firsthand, or if there's any statistical local proof to support the bold assumption that health and safety dangers are caused when any owner installs their own water here for instance. And by any owner, I mean owner or owner occupant. But there does not appear to be an instance that anyone can point to. I will leave it to your accomplished and admired city attorney to tell you what he believes about the city's perceived or potential liability, and what other cities are doing about this or not doing about this. So, but the assumption that this urgency comes about through a perception of liability, I believe I know what answer Mr. Jarrett would give you, and I would defer to that. And, you know, then I'd just say, you know, thanks on behalf of the landlords I represent. I do not represent everyone here, and I would hope that if I have adequately expressed your views, remember or not, that you will allow my... that you will allow my comments to serve as your own, add as you see fit, whatever. But the point is, we really want to hear what these people have to say. Unless you have any questions, that concludes and I, with your permission, I'd like to distribute copies of what I've just said.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd love to see copies. First of all, Jeremy, do you mind bringing it, or that's fine, Mr. Rowan. It sounds like Mr. Valentine has a question for you, go ahead then.
I've got a question for you and I wanted to know if you had checked with the landlord association and mine goes back to dollars and cents. That's what I'm looking at here is these people's dollars and the use of common sense. What is the average rental property, what is the print form? I mean, what are we looking at, four, five hundred a month?
Like around five hundred.
Around five hundred a month?
In Wellington, there's some higher, some lower, five to six probably.
And you've got, what, sixty, sixty-three percent of the housing is rental and you've got eight hundred, around nine hundred tenants right now?
Mr. Valentine, thirty-some percent was rental.
Thirty percent, where did I come up with sixty-three?
Sixty-three is the owner.
Owner.
No, no, no.
Twenty-two and six.
That's the, that's your end. Hold on, hold on. That may well be a census number.
Right.
But on the ballot, the last time the mill levy was being considered, there was a different statistic used, I believe, that indicated sixty-three or sixty-seven percent.
I've heard sixty-seven percent of our houses in the business rent.
And I don't have the detail in front of me, but in connection with the vote on mill levy.
Right.
The number that was used, maybe it was before the ten cents.
Mr. Shields was basically going off the twenty-ten census information, which is factual and backed up by numbers. What I think we all know is that the number of rentals here in Wellington has increased, I think dramatically in the last five years. So, so I think we are, I mean unofficially, we're probably between sixty and seventy percent rental. Would you all say that that's probably most of the truth? Okay.
And if Mr. Valentine has another question, I'll write them down, I don't have the answers.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking for a dollar figure of what the impact is going to be on these, on these landlords, what it's going to be on them and the tenants, that, that's what I'm looking for is a dollar figure, you know, per month. Because we are a community that, and we can dispute this till hell free the voters or nine percent. We've got an awful lot of people on social security in this community, lives on anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars a month. And here again, I'm not trying to be devil's advocate here, but we've all got to live. And, 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 and that's about, I, I just want some, I want some money figures.
I will do my best to gather this.
All right, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Rowan? Thank you very much.
Thanks, let's hope this works.
Well, you know, and I, I appreciate your comments because it certainly allows us then to address certain things. One of the things that you talked about was that the only opportunity for public comment was at the combined trades board meetings. I attended the one here in Wellington, as you very well know, not a huge crowd, but certainly, you know, several concerned people there. And I think tonight is, is part of that process. And then, my, my, the way I wrote down your second comment was basically the uniformity between the cities is irrelevant, not really necessary. But Jeremy, do you have anything you want to add to that?
For several years, we would have developers or tradespeople come over and work and we consistently heard, I don't have to do that in Winfield. And it was commonly Winfield.
Yeah, we, we compare, we get compared to Winfield all the time.
You know, one of those things that can go both ways, it does seem to make a little more sense to have some more consistency out there. But, but we did have a lot of complaints of doing our own thing, of why do you do things differently? It is difficult for them to keep up with.
Well, and I think we all can think back to a very public case where that kind of was very, Wellington was kind of put in a really bad situation, so. Okay, and the third point I gathered is the urgency. Is there an urgency or is this, okay.
We go on for eight months, so I don't, I didn't have urgency, we did it very slowly, we did it very methodically.
Right.
And it was not myself or Richard Brown or Rod Hayne, when we had the meetings, we simply were the facilitators of meetings.
Right, with the tradespeople.
We allowed the tradespeople to read through the code, if they had a question, we answered it. But it was the tradespeople that were
Right.
making the recommendations for amendment deletion or adoption.
Right.
And just like our contractor, excuse me, our combined trades board, myself and Jamie Corneo, we were simply facilitators. And I answered questions of that, I don't run the meetings, I don't make the recommendations, I simply presented this to them as if I was presenting a case to them because somebody built a house without a permit.
Right.
Or a licensed contractor didn't pull a permit. And I was trying to get their license.
I think maybe the term urgency was, you're taking it to imply why Richard took eight months to do it or isn't right to do it. But urgency is, do we have a problem in Wellington that this whole thing is going to be called, that kind of urgency? Well, there's no, there's no deadline or we're not under, like with our water issue, I mean, we're not under any kind of deadlines or anything in that situation. And we're not, we're not being forced by any said entity or anybody to, to comply with anything or to come up with these rules. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure. And, and Richard, you brought up a good point and I want to just make sure that everybody understands this. Because you've taken a lot of heat on this and I want everyone to understand that, that Richard didn't make these rules. He took, as you said, recommendations from the tradesboards, the combined group, and then put them into writing.
That is correct, the only ones that are in there are where the ordinances are that the wording's changed. And I simply did that to clarify the wording, I asked staff, current staff, staff that was here and is no longer, and landlords, and asked their opinion of what was the common practice. And that common practice of the majority of municipalities is you have an owner occupant that's allowed to work on their house. And I think people have a huge misconception, I'll stop talking now.
Well, no, I, I just, one more question and then Mrs. Wardy. Somebody tell me this water heater thing, what, what are the rules right now about installing a water heater in Wellington, Kansas?
Regarding the licensed plumber.
Okay. And has that ever been anything different before now or?
Not to the best of my knowledge. I've been here a year and nine months and the only water heaters I've seen installed are by licensed plumbers.
Shit.
If, this seems to be the big contention.
Yeah, the water heater thing is getting.
We've done a lot of looking through permits, we're not finding permits on work like that. If anybody, and they don't have to do it here tonight, if anybody has information, we can look up and see that if these issues were pulled, I think we need to have that information. But our, our permit software is not showing permits on a lot of this work that we're being told that people have been able to do. And that's one of my questions, what rights are being taken away? We see this as, this is what we've done for four years.
Okay.
I, I want to ask Richard a question, if I come in to your office and I want to buy a permit to put in a water heater, would you sell it to me?
No.
Okay, that's why you haven't seen it. You won't sell me the permit, it's not going to show up to me.
That's illegal and that, I mean.
Oh, that was, that was my question.
Well, I know, okay, so there is, there's certainly an issue here that it sounds like that there's been some work that's been going on that technically shouldn't have been done, but it's being done and now that it's put into writing.
It's always been in writing.
It's always been in.
Okay, let me rephrase that. It's been interpreted and it was in writing when I started my job. I, I, before that, I don't know.
What change was in, what change took place before? If it was in writing, but it wasn't in writing before, then when did council address it to change it? You said it was in writing where owners have to be owner occupied?
No, I didn't say that, I said what's here was in writing
Okay.
when I started. And I asked, and the interpretation when I started was that tradespeople need to do the tradeswork.
I think that's what's throwing people off is the term that how it's been interpreted rather than how it reads. I think this might be what's causing some confusion, that, you know, if it reads it, it reads it, but if it's being interpreted one way, I mean, go ahead, Mr. Fairbanks.
Who was, who was asked on this interpretation, because I can tell you right now, when Wes was there, I went and bought permits to put in a long water line, which I know Richard wouldn't sell me last year when I wanted to put a water line in, but Wes did, okay? I bought a permit to do that and Wes, so obviously the interpretation isn't, hasn't transferred from one, from one building official or inspector, whatever you want to call them, doesn't matter to me, but it hasn't transferred the way it was, okay? I had something I wanted to say to Mr. Valentine about costs too, he, he was asking about costs.
Jeremy, go ahead.
We, we as landlords, we have to make a profit, okay? We invest our money and we have to make a profit, it's not huge. Don't anybody in this room think that we're making a killing because we're not. But in order to make that profit, we have to be able to do some sweat equity work. And if we have a bad tenant, it's never happened to anybody in this room, I'm sure. And the tenant comes in and knocks big holes in the wall, knocks out sheet rock in the wall and, and Richard will tell you, I can put that sheet rock back in, but he's not going to tell you is that I've got to hire electrician to go make sure that everything behind that sheet rock I'm putting up meets, meets some new code. Because I'm not allowed to do that myself. Now, I'm willing to come down and take his tests that he's got, I'm willing to come take that test and show him my know-how-to-read book, I can do it per code, I'm willing to do that, let me do it. I need to be able to do that, I need to sweat equity, I've got to do it to make money. Otherwise, rents are going up, that's all there is to it. I was, I was, in any way you're trying to. I know, I know you want, I was just trying to add it. If you were trying to overprice your rentals, that's not what I meant, I was just trying to get a figure, you know, that's all. I, I'd be very interested. And, and Mr. Jack.
I'd sweat it all.
I, I don't think Richard would have something that he did not believe.
The water is going to be so important.
He would not be on page.
You got it. Keep the, keep the whispering pleased to outside of the, this area.
I, I believe he's, he's, he wants to do his job and he wants to go right. And I agree. But we want everybody to, to try and get on the same page. It, it obviously appeared to me that there's a lot of things here that need to be, or have been superseded or deleted and there's been a whole bunch of stuff that's been misconstrued. And that's what has to happen, we have to all get on the same page, so, so I know, I've got to go talk to Richard about getting a permit for it and I, I realize I've got to get a permit for just about everything, but I got to know what I've got to, you know, I've got a bunch, so. Can you give us some time to look on this?
Hold, hold on, Mr. Fairbanks, because I think Mr. Ender, oh, okay. Okay, thank you very much. And I know you're not rich because you live in my neighborhood. Mr. Ender.
I've got a couple of comments that I'd like to comment on. In addition to what the gentleman had spoken, I'm sorry, I didn't write down your name.
Rowan, Mr. Rowan.
What Mr. Rowan said. I'd like to add the unfortunate situation with regards to this scenario here that we put our building trades officials into. The fact that we were asking them to vote on something that's going to come to the city council and it's on a set of proposed code changes that for all intents and purposes are going to directly affect their livelihood, the majority, if not all of the work that they do requires the author, Mr. Jack's approval. So to put them into an unfortunate situation of voting against something that he put all of his time and effort into and obviously cares about, I think it's an unfortunate situation to put them in because if they vote no against it, they're basically voting no against the person that's going to go out there and write their paycheck. Because he could potentially inspect them a little tougher, maybe not get them till Monday, they got employees to pay. I don't think he's, but as an individual, you have to, you're going to be conscious of that. In addition to that, I think all of these building trades officials, I think they're great people, I know all of them. I, I appreciate their efforts, but in addition to that, another factor, another manner in which they're affecting their paycheck is that by requiring all of the work to be done by them, that means they're going to get additional work, that means they're going to have additional income, they're going to have additional monies coming to them. So therefore, by voting for this to pass, in my opinion, they're writing their own paycheck again. So it was a very peculiar unfortunate situation, I think that it was a lack of leadership all the way around for this to not have a little bit more direction. With regard to Wellington, Ark City, Winfield, which I've had the benefit of, well, I left, I, Wellington's my hometown, I graduated high school here, I left, went to Arizona, came back. I built an office, so to say built an office, I was part of the building process of building out an office in Mesa, Arizona. Completely different scenario than Wellington, Kansas. When we, as a family with the help of contractors and friends, were able to put together the door, it was very welcome, it was very easy, it was very awesome experience to go through that because the individuals that helped us all the way throughout were able to see that Wellington has a population of roughly eight thousand, Mesa, Arizona has a population of a million. When you have a population that's higher, such as Winfield or Ark City, therefore you have a higher amount of people that can pay for things therefore you can drive a higher income from. So I, with all due respect, really don't care what Winfield or Ark City or Winfield, I mean, or Wichita does because it does not affect what. And I'd like to close in saying that I for one don't see a need for more government rules and regulations at this time. I also like to add that since my time on the council, I've not seen any real improvement on the image of the city. Therefore, I don't see where additional rules or regulations are going to resolve anything with a department that is, would seem is overworked based upon the lack of results that we've seen from that department. I've got a picture right here, and I'll share it with you, of a porch that's falling off of a house. And I brought it to that department's attention well over a year ago.
If we're going to start going towards personal issues in the department.
No, this isn't a personal issue, this is a safety issue. This is about the department and the rules and the regulations.
It's got to do with the code implementation.
Well, this is a code violation that happened and it's actually a law, it's taken yards from school.
I'd be happy to speak with you on that.
It is not relevant to the issue at hand tonight. It's only, it's only fifteen items.
That is correct.
The mayor runs a meeting.
Mayor?
All right, Mr. Jeremy, would you like to finish?
That's all I had to say.
All right, Mrs. Wardy, did you have something?
Yes, I have a question about the building and the zoning and those compliance departments. Are you adding employees or are you just reorganizing it?
No, it would still be the same employees, the only thing it does is right now we're all engineering. We do not have an engineer for the city of Wellington at this point in time. The department, the engineering department will not go away, it will still be there just as a quiet department on its own.
It's just more of a reorganization.
It's a reorganization to say, this is what we do, we don't do engineering, because I am not an engineer. We do building, zoning and code enforcement. So to create an office that's building, zoning, code enforcement, which is what. So, to create an office that's building, zoning, code enforcement, which is what we do. But no, we would not be adding any employees.
Is there anybody here from the combined trades board that would like to speak on behalf of?
Oh, Roger.
Lot of time in the corner.
Mr. Reimer would like to speak.
Yes, great. Thank you, Mr. Reimer.
My name is Jack Reimer, and I am on the combined board trade. I have a contract, hold a contractor license in this town. I think one of the misconceptions of the codes is that the codes all derive from safety issues. Hot water heaters, the very first hot water heater codes came around in nineteen forty-seven because a school hot water heater blew up. New London, Texas, killed every kid in the school, in the city, except for one that was homesick. Nineteen forty-seven. Codes are safety issues. That's what codes are. All these codes that we have worked on are all safety issues. I believe that after reading this and going over this myself, I don't see where we're changing what is allowed and is not allowed by landlords or homeowners, other than the wording of what is, which is which.
That right?
Essentially, in my opinion, the landlords are a full-profit business. And as a full-profit business, they are held to certain standards, safety being one. I do believe that the codes are what addresses that. And that's how codes come about. Well, if it has fire codes, then shit those, if there's, you have to have breaks between buildings that you, take you, uh, Chicago and New York. You burn half the city down because you don't have any fire breaks between buildings. You get codes. Now, I have seen hot water heaters in property business, and I have seen young children usually, not usually adults, because of the content of the body content, takes a lot more, uh, poisonous gases to get in a building as a child, that can be adversely affected by it. This, this is all safety, all the codes are safety. The real changes for content are the decking codes, um, there's the basement floor codes. The decking codes are, as a result of everybody seeing the news reports the last couple of years, last six years, decks getting any guilty. There's a reason the codes become more stringent sometimes. And yes, I am a member of that board, and the reason I voted to adopt these codes, they make sense. They make sense for me, and they make sense for the renters that live in my rented house.
Thank you, Mr. Reimer. Did you have a question?
Oh, no, you can go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Jack, and I appreciate you standing up and making those statements on behalf of the board. And I know you don't speak for everybody on the board, but I, I really just wanted to hear from a member of that group because we appreciate all that you do and the time that we take. All right, this is all.
I have a quick question for Mr. Ruane. He represents the South Central Land Stranglers Association. Did they at any time ask you to help fight the inspection process or to help them get away without having to pull permits on work?
No.
Um, as. All throughout the book, we talk of, I mean, they talk about it truly not changing much. I mean, I've read the book and I've read it again, I paint notes. Every time where it says property owner in this book, it's been changed to owner occupied. That's a huge difference, and I think that's why all the landlords are here tonight. That right there is a huge change. That's not clarifying wording, that's changing the entire meaning of things. I don't, I mean, I'm all for safety, too. The last thing I want, I, as a landlord, is for any of my tenants to die. I mean, this is a small town. We do sloppy work, it gets around, we wouldn't have any tenants. That's where the inspections come in. I have a couple of closing thoughts, but all right, go ahead.
Yes, I do. I am concerned about more and more regulations, too. And also, the penalties that are stated in this give, it's, it's like denying people the right, the, um, right of presenting their case. I mean, it, there's wording that says they're deemed to be guilty, and we can't do that without giving a person due process. Yep, yes, it's there, John. Yeah, well, several places, several places, deemed to be guilty. And, you know, that's not proper wording. And, you know, I, I don't want to create an atmosphere of opposing against people who are trying to do this work. You know, we're, we're too small and we have too many other problems to have that kind of conflict going on. And the leverage, the leverage to, um.
Yeah, there it is. It's section one oh six, under violations, is one, it's called prosecution of a violation. Section one oh seven shall be deemed guilty of misdemeanor.
There are several places.
It's in the one oh six point three, section one oh six point three.
Well, that's just in the one sighting. The, the leverage for getting people to abide by the codes is that if their electrical is supply abducted electricity, if they don't, if their plumbing isn't right, they don't get hooked up to the, to the sewer or the, the water. You know, there's other types of leverage without accusing them of a misdemeanor. You know, that's like making a criminal out of someone who's trying to do work on the property.
Mr. Jones?
If the property is occupied at the time that the work is done in violation, to pull the power at that point would displace that family. And that's one of the enforcement issues that we have is the ability, whether it's contractor or contractor. But it's, if there's already somebody in the house, then so, the only way to build that work is to work, actually, unless we cut the power for the family living there.
Could I address the council?
Yes, I need you to come to the podium and tell us who you are and who you're with.
My name is Victor Nelson. I'm a property owner in town. I'm also a senior tax professional at H. Block, and my wife grew up here, and she's a postmaster. We own several properties. We hope to retire here and build, through, sweat equity, excuse me, uh, equity in those properties, and, and that's why this is important to us. I have a couple of thoughts. My, my concern, I start with, and first of all, thank all of you for serving on the council. I know it takes a tremendous amount of time and commitment. My father served on a city council. I'm well aware of what it takes for your personal life, so thank you for your commitment. We all should share, and I'm sure we do, the idea that we need to promote affordable housing. We need to promote people who improve our housing in this town. Part of what happens when you improve it, pull a permit and get it inspected, is the tax base goes up, as well as, uh, professional staff checking the work to make sure it's safe. I agree with Mr. Reimer. The building codes need to be enforced. They're there for a reason. You have two pieces in front of you, though. You've got the idea that we need to update the building codes, that's adopting the, the updated international codes. I don't think there's a lot of argument among the property owners about that. There's some little tweaks here and there that, that may need to be learned about. The other side, though, is the changing of our local ordinances. And that's not in the international building code, and that's not driven by safety. One of the examples is your section eight dash three thirteen, the existing Wellington ordinance, homeowners' rights.
Can you say that one more time?
Sure. Eight dash three thirteen, it's actually subsection eight. In an existing ordinance, it says, nothing herein contains, shall prohibit any bona fide property owner from personally installing any plumbing within or upon the person's own property. Period. Now, I submit, that means you can pull a permit, put in a water heater, get it inspected. Now, the gas part, before we have an argument on that, you can't hook up the gas. And I understand that, that's a different part of the code. But we certainly could do that. And these codes in all the areas, electrical, you can take a test and do the work on the load side of the panel and get it inspected, make sure it's safe, and then get it, get, uh, it puts on property tax and make sure it protects the tenants. Those are the changes that are being made. You read those local ordinances, they're striking it out, changing it to, you know, only owner occupied. The logic that we've heard is that somehow profit mollyburners into it? That's in the letter that was written to you? That breaks down when you consider the fact that the proposal is owners who own the properties have a concern about the value of their property and want to make some money on it, uh, will do a worse job than somebody who has no ownership and their only interest is making money. A contractor coming out there, they're looking for a profit. I'm not going to accuse them of doing poor work, but I'm also not going to accuse an owner who has another interest, too, of doing poor work. The other problem with the logic is there's nobody contesting that you can work on your own house and pull a permit and get it inspected. But that same person going across the alley to the rental that they own is now incompetent. That doesn't make any sense. So, our concern is that when you make that change, is there a reason? So, I went to the combined trades board meeting and I asked, all the decades of experience that's at this table, can you give me an example of an owner doing work on their property, pulling a permit, getting it inspected, it passed, and something happened? There was no example. I haven't found any of that. Lots of people that, if there's no reason for that, then you got to look at the other side of the balance, and that's the tenants who have to pay more rent. I could put a water heater in my house, I can charge. Average rent's six hundred dollars or so in this town. After I pay mortgage, property taxes, maintenance, property management, insurance, you might be taking home a hundred dollars. And it's not passive investment, it's hard work. If I have to have a con, I can do that for about three and a half, four hundred dollars. If I have to have a contractor come and do it, it's going to be a thousand or twelve hundred dollars. I got to raise that tenant's rent a hundred a month. That's just one small example. That's our concern. Talking about people who can't afford, who can't afford much more than a poor landlord, who may be driving to Wichita where rents are higher, got Winfield rents are higher, and you're going to affect them. That's why we're worried about it. It's not clarifying wording, but it's a dramatic change in the local ordinances, the changes from people being able to work on their own property, get it inspected to a state, and improve the town. What will happen, another small example, I have a house that I bought, it's in terrible shape, needs to roof. Hasn't been on your tax rolls, now it is. And I had a bid by a contractor to roof it, eight thousand dollars. That's only eleven hundred square foot, huh? Went out, did the materials, fifteen hundred to develop my own, my own wall. That's the difference in economics. What will happen is those projects won't happen. Uh, that house will get knocked over. Other landlords who buy ten and one thousand dollar houses won't do it because it won't work. People can't afford to pay the rent when they're making thirty thousand a year. That's why we're at, the two parts are important separate. It's the changes to the local ordinance that is the real problem. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say in my opening remarks, you put a pull a permit on that rest of the building itself.
Well, that's, I, I made a list of the things that you, uh, talked about, you know, you could still do, like the switches, doors, windows, all that, and obviously there are some parameters there. But as long as you pull a permit for sheet rock fences, roofing, um, so it's, I, I mean, my, from listening to everything, it sounds like nobody wants to argue that safety is first and foremost. And I don't see that anybody wants to put anyone in jeopardy here. What I think we're on two separate pages here is what can and can't be done by the property owner. And so I, you know, I, I just wish we could find some common ground here, and I don't know what that's going to be.
Sounds like the solution is to. Uh, I believe that.
Well, first, even more than that, I mean, yeah. Paul, I will, just a quick question. Was there a reason for that wording change, or what was the thought process behind that, Richard?
To clarify.
Just to clarify. From, from the for-profit versus the.
To clarify it to the point of how it has been interpreted before.
Okay, clarify how it's been interpreted.
Not how it's been written, it's been interpreted.
The wording was to match the practice, the practice of what did, what permits were issued to, to, for the past twenty years. That's why some of our contention is what, what has been changed other than the work? We're not changing our practice. We're not alleging that we're going to give, or not give permits for work that we have been doing with permits for. The practice would be, remember, saying the wording in the book would match the practice. And I think as we heard tonight, that, that has been what's done because, as Mr. Fairbanks said, that we're not getting permits because the work's being done without it.
When do I say that?
Okay, hold on, Mr. Fairbanks, hold on. All right. Ms. Paula. Tell us who you are and why you're there.
I'm a homeowner of three homes, um, two of which are rental properties. They didn't intend to start out that way, but that's how they wound up. Um, and I have family members living in those homes. Um, we bought these, both of these homes, loan right next door to me, uh, was a, it was very rundown. It was gone awful. But, and when we bought the house, we bought it with the intention to turn it into a money-making type of thing. So, all these other people with money, why not? Then reality set in, and the house needed a lot of work, which we did ourselves, which we pulled permits and every step of the process, plumbing, electrical, everything. In that process, at every step, we had Wes come out, inspect it, ran our combined trade size, inspect it. Um, and then we did the work ourselves. We didn't have to have, I mean, I had Roger come out, we had the plumbing guy come out, we had all the other folks come in, and Wes was there. My issue now is I wouldn't be able to do that. So, I took two rundown homes in this community and turned them around, and they're both really cute houses now, and we did the work ourselves. I wouldn't be able to do that now, and.
Under the proposed.
Under the proposed changes, and if it's interpretation, how come when Wes is doing it this way, come in, get permit, I'll come inspect it, and now it's this way in the book, and nothing's changed? And I'm not saying anything against, I don't know him, I, I don't, I haven't had a full, a comment. But it sounds like now I wouldn't even be able to get past that door. So, that's my thing. We did all the work ourselves. The first house turned twenty thousand dollars, which if we had to do work with the other contractors, it would, I wouldn't have been able to do that. And then the same thing on the little house of Ron G Street, the same thing, I wouldn't have been able to do the work that's done. So, that, that's my big issue. It's in the interpretation of law, interpret it the other way. Do it like the other guy did. Let them pull, let them pull the permits, inspect the damn thing. I mean, that's what inspectors do. Inspect it.
I'd just like to elaborate on that, what she had just said. I'm going to speak only for myself, um, very similar to what happened to you. That's how I got for any rental properties that I have now. I was actually a renter, and I bought a house that turned into a renter, as crazy as that sounds, but I did it because the house was in extremely horrible shape. So much so that if I, knowing, knowing now what I know then, I would have just burnt down. But nonetheless, it was a heck of a running experience. But through that entire process, um, from running the water lines to, I mean, every aspect of it, I've pictures here to show that Wes came out, just as what you had said. I actually, in getting ready for this, I actually went to the courthouse and I pulled, looked at, assessed property. I actually, in getting ready for this, I actually went to the courthouse and I pulled what the assessed property taxes are, were on that property. Um, prior to me purchasing it, uh, two thousand eleven, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eight cents. This year, six hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. That's a three hundred and seven dollars and sixty-two cent increase, or a ninety-one point two-six percent increase to the tax value. I would like to tell you that when I walked out of the title office, the first place I stopped was in, to that office, the inspections department, and that was when I was notified that, he did tell you that one of the structures that's in the back there is actually set up on, it's on a demo list. So I actually bought a house that was literally on their list of things that can be demoed now. I did property taxes by ninety-one point two-six percent, and that's just one issue, or one instance, excuse me. I've done that multiple times. So how it was being interpreted before is contradicting to what's being proposed for changes now. I can tell you with my own experience, without question.
Say who you are and why you're...
I am Stacy May.
And, uh, your business?
Oh, we're a tree company in property care, and we also manage rentals, and, uh, my father-in-law owns one. And I just have two questions.
Okay.
Uh, one, I was just curious, Mr. Black, as to what vested interest you have in Willington? Do you have children in school, do you...
Okay.
I'm just asking.
Right, well...
Because that's relevant to the fact that he was the one that is proposing and making these. Okay, and the reason why I'm asking that is we were at the trade board meeting, and the trade board had the opportunity to accept these changes minus the rewording of the property owner, and they, they voted it down, but they voted in front of Mr. Black.
Jack.
Mr. Jack, okay.
Well, all right, so, Stacy, thank you, okay, thank you.
So you said that the, the combined trades board brought this to us, but you said they had the ability to...
They sat there that night, we were at the meeting, and, uh, they sat down and voted on this twice. Uh, it was proposed that they accept these changes minus the rewording of the owner, property owner.
So just the national building code?
The building code, will accept the code as is, minus that rewording throughout.
Minus the city code changes.
The, yes.
Just to the property owner sections, the four or five sections on the owner, property owner, everything else, there was a motion to accept everything except for the...
Except that rewording.
And it didn't pass?
It didn't pass, okay. Thank you. Okay, so what?
I don't think that's an improper motion to give.
Well, I mean, it's not a...
You can't, you can't vote like that. You either vote to accept or not accept.
Right.
That's, you can't confuse why not have been voted.
Right, so, okay, so hold on, yeah, timeout. So I need some clarification. The trades board, oh, Mr. Fairbanks, come on forward.
I made the motion.
You made the, oh, that's right, that's right, I remember this, okay.
And what the motion said was that we accept, there's nobody...
That's right, I remember now.
And, and all the motion said was to accept the, the code as was, but not to have the word changes that Richard put in there. That's, basically, that was my motion. And I don't understand why that's not a good motion, why that wasn't a proper motion. I don't get, you know, I don't understand that. I made the first motion, the other motion hadn't been voted on or even discussed.
And, and again, I, I wanna make sure that everyone understands that Richard is the messenger here. He took the combined trades board's suggestions and comments and professional opinions and interpreted it.
I thought he's, he generated it, he started it.
Read his letter to the council.
Yeah, we'll read his, yeah.
I did it on my, uh...
I, I read, I read the letter. I'm just saying, he's, he's part of the staff, and I, I just, I, I don't want Richard to be attacked here. I read the letter.
That's what it is.
Okay, well, I mean, and I, Stacy, you've been a friend forever, but I just, you know, his mouth...
If I'm just lying, I apologize, I trust it's fine.
His personal situation is not like...
Well, it's relevant, because everybody that has proposed these is not from Wellington.
Yeah, okay.
Most of the people that were on the board are not from Wellington, that do not live in the city limit.
Okay.
Those big boys that voted, it's why I said, too.
That doesn't make most of the people on that board any better than anybody else on the board.
Right, hold on, hold on, we're coming back up here. Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks, you helped me to remember what happened that night. I do remember your motion, it was voted down, and then it was, there was another motion, and then it passed, Mr. Black.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna clarify to Jeremy, that I wasn't saying that I do the work without permits. What I was saying is Richard won't sell me a permit so it doesn't show up in my name. And I can prove that, because the last house I did on Jefferson, I bought, there was ten permits on that house, and one showed up in my name. Now, I say ten, there should have been ten, I believe there was nine, I don't think the rep or bought a permit, and he was a licensed contractor. I don't believe he bought a permit.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. I, I'm glad you clarified that, because you, you know, and I think, I think the comments that night to Mr., uh, Mr. Fairbanks, Mr. Moore, were that, you know, you guys are exemplary landlords. You guys are, are two of the best that we have in, in Wellington. You do play by the rules, you do what is, and I'm not saying anybody else is, is, you know, less or whatever, but, but let's all admit, in any profession, in any arena, you're gonna have people that will cut corners. I mean, it's just the way people are. I'm not saying that, but that was the, that was the comment that was made that night, that there are certainly, you know, guys...
That's only an argument for make them buy a permit and get it inspected. Because those people that are, are not, the people that aren't gonna do it right, they're not gonna buy, and, and if they wanna do it, it's gonna get done. If John Q Public wants to do it, he's gonna do it, he's gonna do it after hours and on Saturday, when Richard doesn't get the opportunity to inspect it. It's all about safety, just like we've been saying.
So you, you guys are totally a hundred percent can pull the permits, get it inspected. Absolutely, everybody here confirms of that. All right, Mr. Doggs.
Absolutely, I'm Kevin Doggs, and I recently became a property investor in this town. Nobody here wants their houses to burn down. Nobody here wants any harm or injury to come to their tenants. That's ludicrous. To think that, I, I will agree, there are people out there that will try to make a dollar out of a dime, anywhere they can. But as Mr. Fairbanks said, they're not gonna go through the process anyway, no matter what you pass here. And I, I forget the gentleman's name, but let me make it clear, there are two, two, two things going on here. The update to the codes and the change to the ordinance, okay? And it is my understanding that in the past, as an owner, I've, people have been able to come in and pull electrical permits, prove they know what they're doing. I'm a electrical engineer, I'm a degree, I know what I'm doing. I can prove that to anybody who questions it. I am willing, if I need to do electrical work for my property, to pull a permit, more than willing to have Mr. Jack come and inspect it. And if I did something wrong, I'll fix it. And then I'll have him inspect, you know, I'll have him keep inspecting it until it's wrecked. Because nobody wants to lose their property. I mean, a lot of people in this room have made major investments in their properties. Who in their right mind would want to cut corners? I'll just, just make it work. That, that, that's, doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Doggs.
I have a, a question for staff, probably for, uh, Mr. Darnold and Mr. Shields, um, in terms of the comment that they made with the combined trade board. You made the comment that they're not allowed to lie on a beat or something. They are allowed to have, I mean, that's, and I, my understanding is, deciding that board is, is that it's there for them to have communication and for them to talk things, and for them to come to ultimately what recommendation that they have, liability, capability, whatever the terminology would be, in order to ultimately get to whatever arrives at our desk, if you will.
Well, I think, I wasn't at the meeting. Nor was I at the meeting, but it probably depends on how it was presented, whether it was in discussion, or had there already been a motion on one thing, and now I'm trying to backtrack another motion. I mean, I wasn't there, wasn't running the meeting.
From a technicality standpoint, you're speaking strictly in technicality and...
Right, I don't, I don't think...
Order of a question, I can answer.
Remember, the motion made, the second, the vote taken.
And I'm not getting down to the techni- I understand the technicality of the procedures.
I don't think there was anything wrong in the motion.
No, 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 I don't think there's anything wrong in the motion. My question is, is just more, or the procedure of a motion, a second, discussion, voted, all that. My question is, or my point is just, for clarification, that board, as does any board, has full capability and full right to make changes or alterations.
That's right.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure, because...
I mean, the motion was to adopt one without the other, I, I don't think there was any problem with it.
Right, okay, from, from a board standpoint, or a legality standpoint, yeah. Obviously, they gotta fold the motions and all that stuff, going to open meetings and all that. Right.
Okay, yeah, that was all good. Good clarification, Mr. Black. All right, well, yes, sir, go ahead and come on forward, yeah?
I wasn't planning on speaking.
That's okay.
I don't own a home here, I'm a renter. Since I've lived here...
Oh, can you, sorry, can you state your name and...
Oh, I'm Bernard, Bernard Bernie Maston.
Okay.
And I'm retired, or semi-retired.
Okay.
Since I've lived here, we've had contractors come out to the house because of, uh, health issues, to me, because it lasted two months. My landlord called, one contractor, twice, um, I think the second contractor, I'm not sure if he got a third. I'm sixty-seven years old, I called them to the house and said, I need a problem, and I only found part of it. But just because the guy's a licensed contractor, suddenly he's gonna find it. I know of another issue, the same thing with a, uh, heat box that was all burnt out from the car on the outside of the house. And yet, this licensed contractor couldn't find it, didn't bother to knock on the door to go inside. And so, a licensed contractor, not a parent's kid. And my landlord takes care of him, and he owns my rental home. So if he owns his home, he owns my own, what's the difference? He owned the home. If he's gonna make a dollar, he makes a dollar. But if I destroy the house, he's gonna leave thousands of dollars on the one house. The profit margin isn't fair for that.
Could we share a yell?
I too have not come to Germany's team, but I have made some bullet points. For those of you that don't know, I'm Cliff Vail, commissioner for the district of Southern County. I'm in the, uh, third year of my second term. Prior to being commissioner, I was the regulator for Southern County fighting, owning and environmental health for ten years. I had Mr. Jack's job with the county, basically. We had no building codes, wiring codes, or plumbing codes in the unincorporated county. We are not liable, because we don't. That's just where we are. If your kid throws a rock through her window, I'm not liable for that.
Give it to my camera.
I was the radon gas mold and lead-based paint mitigation officer for Southern County. If you're familiar with the lead-based paint laws, they're national, and they're horrendous, defined and burning. I've had, uh, windows replaced seventeen at a time in one of my houses. The lead-based paint law says plastic goes on the ground outside, you're curving it off, and all this stuff. You have wiped down window sills when you unpack those, wipe stuff and send them somewhere for testing. That's not being done. Point is, it's a great law, safety was the, was the intent, but it's unenforceable. Now, I'll go back to the first topic we had here was water heaters. He can put one in his own house, he's just a total idiot over here. So what's gonna happen is it's unenforceable. Apparently, the writing has been on the books, no permits ever issued, and everybody's got a water heater. It's unenforceable. If someone would look up the definition of peacem, I've forgotten exactly what it is. But I'm seeing some similarities here with Southern County. We have a hash, a zoning director in two thousand. A previous zoning director retired, new kids stepped in, started going to meetings. We had a zoning book, I call it soft raised, maybe four or five pages, I don't know. Our new zoning director started attending meetings, met some, some planners, uh, big-time guys that had said we're counting, that he's now everybody's planner in county, including Wellington. Came back with about a three-inch book, went before the, the county commissioners, the local chairs at that time, and said, "Guys, I think this is what we need, this is my recommendation. So if you think that's what we need, we'll..." Inter motion second, all favor, print the notice, became law. I'm in my seventh year trying to undo some of that stuff, some of the unintended consequences. I own lots of our, our blocks, some properties in Southern County. I own several properties in Cali County. I own none in Arc City, and probably never will. When I went to the realtors in Arc City and I said, "Find me, and get me criteria," every house I looked at was plumbed with soft sweated copper. And I was told the trade board lobby got it passed, that you had to have a licensed plumber, and it had to be swept copper. I don't think safety was the intent. I think it was to wrap up the trade. First bullet point I had here with what's going on here is, what is the intent? Where did this come from? And I think if you look under, with all due respect, peacem came to mind, has anybody looked it up?
Are you saying peacem?
A year, a year from now, what, what we're talking about is, is unenforceable. That's my point. We, some of the unintended consequences from the, from the zoning rates that came back from the big-time planner was, and we tried to, we tried to heighten that some for instance, four dogs. You can only have four dogs in Enzo Brady County. What we did was hand the neighbor that didn't have a dog, a weapon against the neighbor that had five. And we had harassment by planning and zoning, harassment by law enforcement, and it got out of hand. I convinced the other commissioners to table it. Don't do away with it, just table it. It's awful. We tabled salaries with another one. We tabled it for three and a half years, phone never ringing. We totally did away with that rate, uh, over a year ago. Phone has not had, we haven't had single dog complaints. We had a rule on the book, you can only have one RV per family. I knew people that had three. The grandparents went to the lake and won, the kids stayed in one, the grandkids stayed in the other one, and next time we could put out the lake, they all stayed around with grandpa. Who do we think we are? If you can only have one RV per family, give me a grade. We zoned the deal for, for Sam Graves, I, I picked on his place for, for years. He, he grew up here, over on Slate Creek, southwest of Oxford, worked for John Beer, I think, all his life, came back. He owns the whole half section, and his son, and, and, and his son's wife, Carmen. Our reg stated that if he wanted to build his dream home down there on the creek where he grew up, in order to put it that far from the road, required a five-hundred-foot frontage. So we required him to survey out forty acres for his house. He owned it all, he already had an acre, and the road brought back in there. I thought it for years, we got it down to a hundred feet. We looked at it, "Why can't you have a flag log? The world is full of flag logs. Cali County is, is full of flag logs, what's wrong with that? A road in and locked, roads that hold and the, and the five acres is, is a lot. We're now down to sixty acres, stuff like that. The unintended consequences of somebody bringing something that they've done, well, this even can't. You can't have, you can't have a, a, a decent guy here replace his own self, like Richard said, and be an idiot when he goes across... and be an idiot when he goes across Cali to a rental property. I would also point out that we have a thriving lumberyard here. And I won't argue sixty-nine percent or seventy-three percent, but I view seventy-three percent non-owner occupied in Southern County over two or three years now. I think that's a very close number. I don't think the contractors buy the majority of their supplies at a local lumberyard. Maybe I'm wrong. But I'm trying to picture a lumberyard in Arc City. Is there one? I haven't, I don't know where it is either. There's almost not one in Windfield. And we have a thriving one here. And I blame that on the seventy-three percent non-owner occupied landlords that send their craftsmen down there because they have an account. That's what I do. All of my addresses have its own account, I get a bill, I pay. So, what we're talking about here, in my opinion, looking at some of the similarities, is unintended consequences. Be very, very careful because it's hard to undo. And when you try to undo it, you probably get back, smart men put that in place. We don't want any unintended consequences by undoing it. But it's really easy to do. And if you do this, there will be some serious consequences. I'm not saying I know what they all are, with all due respect to Mr. Jack, I don't know Mr. Jack. But disappeared danger to me is, based on my history as a regulator. By the way, has everybody noticed that mold has disappeared, there was an epidemic years ago? And I've heard anything about mold for about five years. Anybody know why?
No, Mr. Bill, please tell us.
It's specifically excluded under homeowners coverage now. Do you know where it came from? Lead-based paint is an actual mold inhibitor. Thank you.
You are just a wealth of information.
I think we all look right at this.
Yes, thank you. And by the way, feed them is anything as an organization or real estate owned or controlled by one dominant person or group. There you go. We all learned something tonight, how wonderful is that?
And typically, there are additional employees to do controlling that we don't have now.
Commissioner Bill, I always just feel smarter being around you. Alright, anybody else, yes, sir, Mr. May?
I'm Brad May. Been here in Wellington for about fifty years. And my concern is when, we manage some properties here in town for a guy that lives out of state. And I'm just wondering how this is going to affect our ability, what we're going to be... Can we do anything as far as repair work on the properties that we maintain? And I think that's my big question, is how that's going to affect me as a property manager, am I out of the job, basically? Or, you know, with that part might work.
Thank you, Mr. May, that's a great question. Does the ordinance and/or code address management? It's all the same, companies. I mean, obviously, that's a...
Well, no, but, excuse me. People, I guess, are not really understanding. You have to define repair. Are you fixing a water heater? Then fix it, doesn't need a permit. Are you patching some sheet rock? Fix it, doesn't need a permit. If it doesn't need a permit, I don't care, it's irrelevant to me. It's only when it requires a permit is where our office gets involved. That's the long-term. So, if it's something that does not require permit, okay, fix it, knock yourself out. But what requires a permit are, even if it were a water heater or furnace, or a number of any other things that require permits, there are not people knocking our door down for permits. And as far as property manager goes, those people would not be able to pull permits for electrical plumbing and watering mechanically because they are not the owner of the house. But I've also grew up in a family that has rental houses. And I've noticed a deterioration in our ability to do our own work over the years. Like, if I've been here fifty years, and we can do less and less and less as time has gone on. With good reason, I understand the safety concerns that are brought up, you know, those are good points. But there's a handful of people in Wellington that are pretty capable of doing stuff. And so many fellows I've seen do stuff their whole lives, they're very capable people. And is there any way that those who are capable can be taken into consideration as well?
Thank you, Mr. May, appreciate that. This is Holly.
My question for Mr. Jack, but when he talked about what needed permits and what didn't permit. The proposed code changes has quite a few things in here that are more stricter, where there's been changes. Okay, then please clarify. I'm looking at the word exempt from permits, page nine, there's a listing of sixteen. Fifteen, repair or replacement, it said originally, repair or replacement of siding materials. You have added not exceeding four hundred square feet, which is making a stricter guideline, is that not right?
It's strictly requiring, it's in requirement, we probably have for a roof. If it's under four hundred square feet for a roof, you don't need a permit, it's a complete patch. And we have code requirements for siding. Some are to make sure it's installed properly, make sure it seals up properly. Right now, with that wording that's there now, anybody can put any type of siding they want on their house. Or, or no siding at all. And there are structures in this town that have no siding on them.
If there's art, where is the code at that dictates the siding that you need a permit for? If this just goes along with that?
It would be in the IRC, and I don't have it for me.
Okay, repair, replacement of interior chips and board on non-firey walls or ceilings. It's been added when the total area does not exceed a hundred square feet, which is about three sheets of sheet rock.
Well, ma'am, you're in the commercial aspect of the code right now?
I'm just looking at the changes.
Well, that happens to be in the commercial aspect of the code. In the residential aspect, there's two changes.
I'm going off back here.
There's three changes.
Okay.
One is requirement for a footing underneath a major area of concrete fences that exceed four feet in height. Which if you don't, it's going to sink into the ground. Two would be the siding requirement over four hundred square feet. The one hundred square foot rule for, on the International Residential Code is already in. I didn't write that, I didn't change that, it was already there.
Okay. I highlighted a couple.
That is my question for now. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
Hi. That's from my question. I told you I've been around for sixteen, and I'm glad I've been here and stuff. I just learned today, I'll form it as a question. College is going east of Walmart, city limits stop at the west boundary of K O A. We have some potential across the road north from McDonald's. Going east of there. What is the city's intent for those commercial structures and businesses that are going in there? As far as building and... We've excluded, we've disincentivized, the last city manager disincentivized the eastern corridor under the N R P. On the theory that it would grow on its own.
We don't have the N R P for the corridor?
The eastern corridor was excluded under the N R P. Brian, so this council, everybody at that time?
So, my question is, when those businesses start going across the highway north, what's Wellington going to do? What's your involvement with those?
Probably my best one is you in the county. Probably my best, what you do in the county.
I learned today that that's in your three-mile extraterritorial.
You know, I, to be honest, Mr. Bills, I know that I've sat in on a couple of meetings. And obviously, we want to be very, you know, new business friendly. Certainly, it was my intentions when I ran for mayor to build that corridor. I'm embarrassed that I just found out that the N R P does not apply to that corridor. I'm not happy about that, but, you know, we'll...
And I apparently humiliated the city manager when I said, "Why in the world would you disincentivize the only direction Wellington can grow if you're serious?" And I said, "Don't come to me for economic development money." And there wouldn't have been anything if I'd seen I had here in the... Can we fund this all?
That doesn't seem to do with what we heard tonight, four minutes. No, it doesn't, alright, so, yeah, unfortunately...
Here's the deal, across the road, in your three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, you're going to issue a twenty-five-dollar building permit, and you're all done. There are no building codes, wiring codes, plumbing codes in your extraterritorial jurisdiction. And the county will handle the sewer and water project. Let's say that.
West of the Vanex.
Say both of that.
And that...
Word to the wise.
And that is a whole different work session.
It is.
Word to the wise.
Right. Well, I think that's where the county and the city really need to stay in communication. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good for thought. Alright, so, as far as the topic at hand. Does anybody else have any more questions as far as the council goes? Any more discussion, staff, anything? Yeah, I mean, if nobody else has anything?
Conclusion would be, obviously, from the work session, from the normal procedure is, we come to a conclusion or at least a consensus of what direction you wish to take. At this point in time, the combined trade board having made a recommendation, that is what will come here some point in time. Now, whether it be a meeting or we look at something else. If there's a consensus here to give us some direction of what you wish to perhaps consider as alternative to do that research and provide to you that information. Obviously, I think if your consensus direction is to consider changing the existing interpretation, I mean, that involves quite a number of other potential impacts that we would have to provide you some additional information.
I would not vote for this if it were presented as the way it is.
Is there some clarification that you would be in favor of that?
My question would be, are you supporting the consensus to support the change to twenty-fifteen I code, but not the chapter eight for the ordinance changes? To give us some idea of...
Looking at me, well, okay, here's my thought. I mean, it's our job to set policy, but that policy has to make sense. And that policy has to solve the problem. And I've yet to hear exactly, or it has to have a purpose. And, I mean, we can talk safety, but that's not, that's not the purpose. I don't think this is going to solve any problem. I think the bad bar outweighs any good in doing it like this. I'm against doing anything right now. I... I would like to see if there was a problem that city staff saw from driving down through Wellington, which every person here knows, we have a housing problem in Wellington, we see it, I've grown up with it. And there's not one solution. But why can't we, as a city, call in the key people? Not just landlords, but the contractors and the realtors and econ development and the people that are involved in housing and sit down and have a session with us? How can we solve this? This isn't solving anything but confusing people, alienating people, and just, it's not going to do anything at all. Why can't Wellington have a, hey, we are here for you, let's sit down, let's brainstorm, and let's solve the housing problem? I mean, I, that's what I'm for, I'm not for this at all. And I don't think there's enough changes you could make that would get a yes vote from me.
Mr. Reynolds, do you want to add anything? Okay. Did you have a thing?
I think there needs to be some more research done. I'll agree with Kelly that we need to talk to these contractors and the people that do the work in the city. Perhaps we need to, we need to have their input. I know we've got the combined trade board here, but I, do we have any licensed qualified electricians here? Do we have any licensed qualified plumbers here? Do we have any, where are these people? If they're here, if they're here, would you raise your hand, so I can hear it? There's surely more than that. I think we need to fine-tune this thing. I think, I think we need to, you know, I think we're a long ways from the end, and I think we just need to... We need to back up, re-group, and look at this again. Not trying to pull a punch at Richard or anything, he's had a tremendous job, he's a tremendous man, he does a great job. We've got a lot of things involved here, a lot of people, a lot of homes. That's why, that's why I'm at heart right now, we need to pull back and re-group. We've got a lot of good info here, don't get me wrong, but I honestly believe that we need to... We need to settle this and get some more input before we make any, 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 for real decision. That's the way I do it.
Mr. Beth, would you like to add your detail?
Yeah, I'm thrilled. I am actually thrilled to see this much interesting something. You know, we as a body set up here every month, and we make decisions based on information handed to us. And so seldom is there that input from the community. It's usually one person, maybe one committee, whatever. A roomful of people in my, and even though it's a dicey subject with you, I'm really, really glad to hear this input. I'm not saying I'm changing, I don't think we have enough information yet to make a decision. So, there probably won't be any to make a decision. But there's other sides of this matter. And I think we need to dig a little deeper into certain things as to what, conforming to various codes do mean, what changing of certain ordinances, how does that affect other people? Lot more work needs to be done before we make any final decision. But thank you all for being here.
Alright, Mr. Reynolds? Sure, please, yes.
I'm Marvin Rames. I'm no longer on the combined trades board. I step down to the main room for the landlords. I've been on it for close to twenty years. The mayor's have asked me to be on it after my term was up. I was through all the meetings to adopt the twenty-fourteen M E C code, which was voted on by this board and was accepted unanimously. Then I was at every meeting for the I R C and then the M E C before I stepped down. And I really see that, that Jack made, Richard made every effort to reduce the number of city ordinances that were on the books, especially for electrical. It's tremendous reduction in the number of city ordinances that were on the books before we started our work. So, you might keep that in mind, that it's a lot less than it was before we started all of our meetings for Arc City and Windfield. And I know there's this one point of contention, but... That's not really anything I have anything to do with.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. And I, and I think you certainly...
I just wanted to clarify something. The two landlords that are on the combined trades board, their positions are considered residents at large. The two landlords that are on the combined trades board, their positions are considered residents at large. It's a, I guess, a coincidence that they applied, but that's those, we had two applicants that were residents at large and they both are landlords, which is probably because they have in what's going on. But we don't have landlords as a specialist on the board, I guess. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
When I stepped down, the citizens of large and they stepped in as citizens of large.
I think we found out we were in like noncompliance for not really technically having residents at large on there.
I think, Mr. Reynolds, he brings up a, from what I heard him say, there's a lot more common ground between all of us than there is differences. I think the differences are certainly, as you said, dicey. Or maybe Mr. Buss said that, but you know, I too appreciate the input. It has been great to hear from everybody, learn a new word, appreciate Mr. Bills for that. But I also want to say that I appreciate the combined trades board. And, you know, these are people that give their time. Any volunteers? Yeah, volunteers that look at this stuff. They are our, and they are the ones that, that give up their time that, that we, you know, should respect their decision and their vote. With that being said, I think it's the consensus of this group that we need more information before we move forward. I also want to say thanks to staff. Jeremy, I know you and Richard and Jamie and the entire staff put a lot of time and effort into this, and I don't want that to go overlooked because it's not. And again, I think sometimes, because you guys do this on a daily basis, you know, it's a, it's a much more, I don't want to say personal, but I mean, it is. When you, when you deal with this stuff on a daily basis, I mean, we're volunteers for the most part. You know, we, we come in and we say our part, and then we go back to our other jobs. But you guys are the ones who have to implement and deal with this on a daily basis, and I don't want that to go overlooked. That you're appreciated.
We're not telling you, no. We're not saying we need to work on it.
I think, I think there just needs to be some more information and some other fact finding. What I would like to do, is there, if there is any way that someone from, I mean, Mr. Fairbanks or Mr. Moore, I can kind of look at the two of you since you are on the combined trades board and you get picked on because you're on the board. Is there any way that you could get us a list of, of some of the concerns with the current proposed changes? I mean, what, because, because I think unfortunately the rumors are rampant right now of what you can and can't do. And so I would like to come up with a list of what, what you perceive as, you know, now is going to be illegal or not allowable under these new changes. So I think that would help us to get on the same page. And then we can address those things and hopefully, like I said, kind of come to a consensus, so.
Pretty sure it's a pretty simple list.
Okay, and if that's the case.
I think we ought to be able to buy the permits and get it inspected. That's what everybody's going to tell you.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
I think what, what the answer that's going to be is we want to be able to buy the permits and get it inspected. Now, I'm not talking about looking up gas, I don't want to look up anybody's gas line. And I'll take the test for electrical. And I think we ought to be able to buy permits and get it inspected.
Okay. So obviously some, some things that we need to, okay, consider before we move forward. All right. You've, you've got our emails. Be gentle. If there's anything that we didn't get to say tonight, please let us know. Mr. Bills, I'm, I'm sick of giving you the last word.
As we were all close to the college, planning their ballot question and all that. I think with that college, and I'm not sure, somebody that lives in Arc City or Windfield might be able to help. Emporia K C Lawrence, the college has requirements for housing for all campus students. But there may be some positive creep coming here, because I don't think there are any dormitories planned that the college might get here.
Not at this time, unfortunately.
So if they have requirements for all campus housing, there may be some positive creep. I think it's about by section eight. Their first description, if they come, does Arc City and Windfield, does the college have that?
Good, good, good point, and something we probably should consider when looking at these.
Maybe coming.
Yeah. Maybe coming on the way. All right, Mr. Shields, I'll give you the last word.
I don't think I have anything to add, I understand what you've hinted.
Okay. Good deal. All right.